Hi. Hello. I think at this point, we all know our answers have been, our questions have been answered. They obviously had other reasons for terminating Brian. It is an at-will. They have probably had problems. They've mentioned they've had problems the last couple of months. Okay? Let it be gone. Next time, as far as the computer is concerned, I'm sorry, but I don't understand why the attorney didn't just come here and access the information from the computer. The computer should not leave the office. It should not whether the attorney, we are their client. The attorney should come here and get any information that they want, that they need to.
No, the attorney does what's good for the attorney and the association.
What if the computer went broke on the way over there, though?
It doesn't matter. There's no reason, we pay the attorney. There is no reason why that attorney could not have driven here and gotten the information. And I think going forward, that should be the only way that it is done.
I agree with her. The attorneys come here to conduct meetings. To conduct meetings, they come here. So certainly, they can come here to remove important information, I would say. Okay, yes.
Jerry, Jerry, I'm trying.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's, let's let Abe have a word. Okay, don't pull it down.
Just talk from your seat. Talk from the seat, Abe.
You are, go ahead.
Talk from the seat.
I, as a unit owner, wish to thank very sincerely Jerry.
Oh, come on now.
Don't tell me, come on.
Come on, come on, come on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Believe me, what he has done now is opened up a can of worms. I am sitting here for two hours, and I'm hearing inconsistencies among the high-ups. Also, also, as a fellow employer, I agree with Jerry. In my many years in business, I've never seen an employee fired. Only Donald Trump could do that on television. So I think he deserves a round of applause for Jerry.
Abe, you're a book. Let's get down to the facts. Okay, is there anything else? Because we have to move on, okay? I'm just, I personally, to end this, all right? Personally, I don't think it was done properly. If there was any, if there's anything that can be done to get Brian back, I think it's be an asset to the community, because he spent eight months already, he spent eight months getting information. We have, we have to start from scratch again. Look, it sounds like we have a bunch of kids here. I'm entitled to my opinion, and you're entitled to yours, so that's not a problem. Let's move on, let's move on, okay? All right, the next, the next topic, and I forgot, I forgot to mention, but I guess we're all family here, we all know one another. It's a good idea when you speak, if you gave your, gave your name. Okay, you have all the time you need, but don't, you know, we don't want to spend here all night. And, and you're entitled to your opinion, but facts are more persuasive. Okay? And the truth is the best protection against the legal system. Okay, the next subject is the, is the loan, okay? And I, you know, since I've been here, '99, with Scott at the helm, I have always been opposed to the mentality, the mentality that, you know, you shouldn't put aside a certain amount of money called a reserve to take care of long-term improvements. And I think that the, the boards have not served the owners properly by insisting on either full reserve and not making them aware that they can have a partial reserve. If, just for, just for argument's sake, if there was an average of $50 that was part, that was considered a reserve, that's a half a million dollars plus interest every year that you would have aside, and you wouldn't have needed this seven, eight million dollar reserve, or at least you certainly wouldn't have needed all of it. And that's something that everybody can plan on. I know for myself, I, you know, I hear the nonsense that Scott and the board and the previous, and the, and the next board said, I, myself, put aside $100 a month on top of my maintenance. So when the assessment came, I was prepared, and I paid the assessment, so I don't have an assessment. You don't have to be rich, you just have to plan. And I think the boards are doing us a disservice, because basically, an assessment is only a reserve, a reserve that has been postponed. That's all an assessment is, in my opinion. So I think that we're not, we're not, the boards are not, are treating us as children, and they're scaring us, is what they're doing, by saying it's full reserves or nothing. And I say to you, instead, in my opinion, instead of this big four and a half million dollars, if we all got together and had an average of $50, or maybe because we need more money up front, maybe it would have to be $100 as an assessment in, in a year, we would have a million dollars at the end of the year, plus interest. So it's probably like a, a million, 100,000. So it's something definitely to consider, rather than saddling everybody and giving all that money to people to handle. That's tough, that's tough to handle. You get seven, eight million dollars, you never know. I mean, I was really appalled, I was appalled when, when I asked Joe, when, after the money came in, and I asked him, and then I saw the, the balconies were done. And I said, were the balconies part of the budget for this seven million dollars? And he said, no, they weren't part, this is paraphrasing, they weren't part of the budget, but once the money came in, we used it as we saw fit, as it was necessary. I, I, I mean, they were obviously entitled to do that, but that doesn't make any sense to me. You make budgets, and you get money for usage, and for particular usage, and you don't just say what you're going to get it for, and then when you get it, use it for whatever you want. Yes.
First, I'd like not to be taped, but when you send out a budget, by law, you have to send out the budget with full reserves. Then it's, then it's up to the association to either vote it down, go 50% or anything they want. Okay, you have to give, you have to send out reserves with 100%. Then the, then the association has the ability for 50%, zero reserves. At this point, the way history runs, we cannot start funding with how, with the amount of money we owe. But again, like you said, put $10 aside, 100, okay, that's fine, but in the long run, people are going to have to come up with the money, whether you're doing the reserves or not. At this point, most people, the mental thought behind it is, I'm not going to be here by the time the reserve money is used. So, I mean, it's up to the people here to decide. They can vote on it. It's 100%, nothing, 50, or anything in between. You want to put aside $100 for roofs?
Jerry, Jerry, I'm, I'm in full favor of fully reserved.
Fully, I'm not in favor of fully reserved, because I think that would make it more, would make it difficult for a lot of people.
However, however, you're saying to people here that they should put X amount of money aside. We have a lot of money that's owed the village, because people are not paying their assessment and their maintenance. How do you expect them to pay more money, Jerry?
I'm just not sure what you said. You said we have a lot of money that's coming in?
No, 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 there's a lot of money owed.
Oh, well.
A lot of money owed, so you're asking...
I don't, I can't address that.
Well, Jerry, you heard last night, when Mark, when Mark mentioned that we are behind $220,000.
Well, Stuart, Stuart suggested that through his experience, maybe he'd be able to get some back. That's always been the case. We've always been short, but now it's more, and you've been reading the paper, you want to understand what's out there, and what the problem is. So you shouldn't be surprised by that bit of information, and make it worse before it gets better. But that's not, you know, it's not even the people's fault necessarily, they may be victims too. We just can't, we just can't, no point in addressing that. All right, so, does anybody have any thoughts on this new assessment? Do you like the idea? I know, I was talking to Brian today, and Brian, Brian, one second. Brian was, Brian was for the assessment. Brian was for the assessment, because he's...
Quietly.
Brian was for the assessment, because he intimately knows what we have here, and he had gone around all the buildings, and he saw buildings that trusses and that, you know, the underpinnings of certain buildings are seriously flawed and must be fixed. So his opinion, you know, and I respect his opinion, is that we need the, the assessment. So, again, I'm not smart enough to have any answer. I just feel that reserves are something that we should consider. Come on, come on up.
Come on up.
It's not about this topic, it's just a point of order. Sorry.
We have no order here. This is not Robert's rules. We're not going by Robert's rules. It's Jerry's rules.
Okay, well, let's, no, I, I don't need a microphone, but I've been to many town hall meetings. I can talk very loud. I've been to many town hall meetings, I think they're a great idea. I think people should share their feelings. I think unit owners should get answers to their questions. But I have never been to a town hall meeting that is run like a trial. I've never been to a town hall meeting, really, where people are being videotaped. That concerns me. If it's for your home library, I'd like to finish. If it's for your home library, it's wonderful. I'm a teacher. When someone from the school board comes in to videotape me and my class, they must get a release from every student in that room, from me, from everybody who's being videotaped. If they want to use that tape anywhere else, other than their home library, you must get a release. So I don't think this tape can be used anywhere, in a court of law, or for any purpose.
That's good. Maybe you're right. Maybe you're right. To me, to me, I don't have a problem. Anybody that doesn't want to be part of this, the door is located there, and don't locate it there. So if you, if you want to be a part of it, then one of the requirements of being a part of it is to be videotaped. What is being done, I have no plans for the videotape, other than I'm interested in the information to be accessible, and not just fly off in the air somewhere. I haven't, I haven't spent my time, I haven't lost my sleep, okay? I haven't had my blood pressure go up in preparation for this, just to lose everything in the air, okay? You guys are entitled, all of you, I want to make it available, this format is available to you. You want to have a town hall meeting, you want to have subjects discussed, I'll be happy to come and participate, because I think we need participation. I don't feel we have enough participation at the board meetings, and I don't like that format. So, anyone that wants to do this, they're welcome to do it, and put the energy, and effort, and funds into it, okay? It's very easy to criticize, okay? And no one has to come. I could come here, and I can face empty chairs. That's fine. I get to, get to bed sooner, so I don't buy that.
I'd like Carolyn to speak.
Would you mind coming up front, please? It's going to be tough to do it that way, you have to go around.
Move over, Norman.
My name is Carolyn, and I'm a retired judge from Massachusetts. I wish this meeting were being run by an independent moderator. I'm really upset to hear that we're running under Jerry's rules, and to observe that we're so obviously running under rules that allow you to take the microphone and say whatever you want for any length of time, to grab it away from people, and to rebut what they're trying to say, to tell us which topics are important and which are not, and not to get on with the agenda of why I thought I was called here today. I think if we're going to do meetings like this, we need somebody impartial to run these meetings, because, sir, you're doing a very bad job.
I accept your criticism, Judge, and I, you know, I, I, I feel, and I said in the beginning that I'm impartial, I'm here all by myself, nobody has helped me prepare for this event, and so I, I don't know how I can inoculate myself. I'm very disappointed in the political process. I was supposed to have the, the property manager here to speak for himself, and because of the politics of the situation, he didn't show up. The less I say, the better. What I say is not really meaningful. It's what the board members say, and we just want to communicate. We don't have another forum. And if you have another idea of how we can have what you're suggesting, I'm, I'm trying to make it as impartial. I'm as much against Scott gaining control as I am against Joe gaining control. How long have you been here? How long have you been here?
I think as...
How long have you been here? Is that an easy question? Four years. So you haven't...
May I say, I think if you want to have a meeting run properly, then just ask people to speak, and don't rebut everything they say. That is not the role of somebody who runs a meeting.
That's a good point, that's a good point. I will try to adhere to that, okay? I will try to thank you very much for the criticism, and I'll try, get emotional about these things, because, why because? I'd like to see people working together, and I get these, I get these... Easy, easy. No, 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 it's a valid criticism. I, I respect her, and it's a valid criticism, she obviously has more knowledge than I do about it, okay? So, I appreciate that, okay? Well, that's it. The, as far as the, the assessment is concerned, anybody have anything else to say? No? Okay. Marilyn, if we're holding you up, you know you can go. Somebody raise their hand? Yes, come up here, young lady.
Good evening, my name is Liliana, and I would like to say something regarding assessments. I'm strongly, very strongly against any further assessment, and I will tell you why. Maybe if this first seven, eight million, I don't know the figure, the final figure, is not spent like, I don't know how to say, but we were on the meeting yesterday, when our president told us that she didn't read the contract of $320,000. So, it is very scary. And we know that this seven, eight million have, have gone. What is the point in 4.5 million plus, or 12 million, and to return the previous mortgage, what, loan, and to, to have another money, if we don't know how we spend it, and for what we are spending?
We don't have much time.
Yeah, I know, I know that we don't have much time, but this is very, very important. I think that to give so much authority to the board, that has not, it is not, this is not experienced board in, in millions of dollars, my dear. This is something that has been done with, with the people who are very, very knowledgeable in that field. And we spend that money, I mean, not we, sorry, the board spent that money without asking us what they are going to do, how they are going to do, and how, and how they will spend the money, and we don't know where, where is eight million? Eight million is not, it is eight million potatoes, my dear. This is, this is, this is so big money, I don't know whether you think that you live in, in Trump City, or in International Village. This is the village of middle-class people. And we don't have so much money to, to, to spend like crazy. Right.
Okay, now, to begin with, it's unfortunate that we had to borrow so much money, but when we finally had to pay off debts from the previous board, we were left with a little over five million for construction. Now, the lady is absolutely right. Gloria is not a construction expert. Gloria is not a contracts expert, which is why we paid a property manager a very large sum of money, which is why we pay attorneys very large sums of money, which is why we have consulting, construction consultants, which is why we have engineers who know what needs to be done. So to accuse Gloria simply of not fully reading the contract is, 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 well, it's, it's just being unintelligent and unknowledgeable. There is no reason why she should be accused of being negligent when she did something on the advice of paid experts hired by the village who are supposed to give your board guidance. We are volunteers, most of us have had some business experience, we're not lawyers, we're not contractors, and we're not engineers. And we do the very best we can with experienced people whom we expect to help us stay on the ball. Now, as to consulting anybody individually about what needs to be done, I don't know what needs to be done. I mean, I know that Yorkshire is falling apart, but I wouldn't know where to say, do this, do that. We have to rely on our engineer and the people who are knowledgeable about what we need. Thank you.
That's, that's, to me, that's reasonable, too. I mean, I ran a business for 30 years, and I had an advertising person, I had a lawyer, I had an accountant. I'm not qualified to handle those things. So I don't see any problem with Gloria signing off on something that a professional person has looked at at all. That's not a reasonable requirement for a board. In fact, I think that, you know, that's a decision that the association, the Association, the condo association has to go, whether they want a strong board, they want their own employees, they want to try to keep the expenses as low as possible. We had something like that when Scott was around. We didn't have a big, we didn't have, yeah, well, I, that's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know Scott was more involved in the day-to-day things, and so, I mean, that's an option, to have a, to have a strong board that oversees things, and even has employees, and the other end of it is just have an oversight board and have a strong management company. I don't know the answer to that. I think we've had a little of both of those things, and there may be steps in between. Anyway, that's, that's the assessment. I don't, you know, I don't think there's any conclusion on it, it's just getting information in the air. The final topic, and I save it for last, because it's...
Can I make a statement on the assessment?
Sure.
As far as an assessment goes, it's to pay off a loan to a bank for services that will be done to the village. In order to get the loan, you must substantiate where every dollar is going to. Whatever you, whatever you borrow, you must make it known to the bank how much is going to what particular job. Those figures are supposed to be available to all unit owners on a monthly basis from Continental. If we don't get them from Continental, we can't pass them on to the unit owners. So then, they have the right to ask the question, where did the money go? There's no, no argument about that. But if the management company does not fulfill their obligation, the board can't give you that benefit. When the loan is made, everybody must be made aware of how the money will be spent. So you did get information when the last assessment went out. If another one goes out, the law requires that the board let people know where the money is being spent, and how much each job will cost. Also, in all due respect, Your Honor, in the, in our, I can't think of the term, the book that was given out when people bought their condos. Not the documents, it's the offering. The book was called The Offering. It says that anybody can hold a town hall meeting, anybody can say what they want, and anybody can be there to accept it or reject it. And unfortunately, these things happen. Sometimes it gets too one-sided, and that's the nature of it.
Yeah, because she sounded, she came up here, you're next, okay?
Yes, I just, I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say about the assessment, we are, most of us, middle-class people. Now, we get... We are now on our third assessment? Now, it's reaching a point where many of us cannot pay the assessment. I'm not talking about myself, but there are many of us, which means that even though we have the assessment, the money is not coming in. Well, what are you doing in case like that? Let's say 30% of the people can't pay the assessment. They simply can't, they haven't got it.
I hesitate to answer, but I, I'm assuming that if work has to be done, it has to be paid for. And if it has to be paid for, it's the owners that have to pay for it. I understand it's a strain on certain people on fixed income, but it's not, it's not anybody particular's fault. We didn't ask Hurricane Katrina or Wilma to come here and visit us. Okay? Yes, ma'am, pardon me.
I want to ask, what is the individual amount of assessment to each per, each unit?
I don't know that it's broken down yet, but they're, they're asking for an additional four and a half million dollars. I don't know what the breakdown is on... We'll know later, if it's approved. Yeah, all right. Okay, that's the assessment. Now, we, the, the most delicate topic is the recall, I think, and we save that for last, because if it's been exciting now, it might be more exciting. I'm entitled, Your Honor, to say a few words initially, since I called the meeting? No? Well, would you like to make some comments first? Would anybody would like to make some comments first about the recall? And then maybe I'm being fairer that way, okay? We're talking about the recall petitions, yeah, there we are, come right up. You want to make a comment? Well, they recall the, it's not like, yeah, I'm talking about the recall concept, the concept of recalling. That's what I, you know, I, I expressed it, recall petition, but I'm talking about the concept of recalling people. I have my thoughts on that, and I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
Okay. I'm thankful to the, to the people of the board that we voted, Gloria, Joe, and Clyde. I voted for them at the time. I'm thankful for what they did. At the time, the, it was a mess. The other board, according to them, and the slides they showed, they had left a mess of the building, so I'm thankful for that. However, after two years they've been in, my question, why, as far as I'm concerned, Brian is the best property manager we ever had. Hector would have no education, had no skills, okay? Brian was smart, he did it more than anybody else in the last two years. My question is still unanswered, why was he fired, and why is he not here to defend himself? And because, hold on. That's okay. My comment, it's related to the recall. Because of that, you know, I am considering recalling them, because I'm not satisfied at this point, you know, I'm, all this money is gone, the things that, so personally, I... Yeah, so, you know, it's a consideration of the recall.
Yeah, all right, all right, yes. Okay, referencing recalls, over the past 12 years, I have seen attempted recalls on damn near every board that was here. Some were successful, some were not. This is a voluntary position. We don't have engineers, we have to hire engineers that we hope will be, that we hope will give us a fair shake, and will not take money from us unnecessarily. I don't know Brad from Adam. I don't know whether Brad is a good engineer or a bad engineer. I don't know, just a minute, I don't know, I don't know if Gloria, I'm sure Gloria doesn't know a thing about building, but I think Gloria and the board have tried to serve this community. I don't think there has been any malfeasance of office in this community. There may have been mistakes made, and there may have been people who saw fit to, I'll even, I'll go, come out of the woodwork and suddenly point out these mistakes, instead of having come to the meetings over a four-year period, and, okay? So that's, that's about where I stand. Okay? All right, look, now I'm number three. The recall is, in my opinion, is, is not something to take lightly, okay? Like impeachment is not something to take lightly. And I feel that if somebody is elected in a free, fair election, which we have here, then that person is entitled to fill out their term, unless they do something illegal. If they don't do something illegal, the fact that you disagree... the fact that you disagree with them, you know, is not a reason to recall them. I have a high regard for Gloria. I have a high regard for all the women on the board. I think that they have stood their ground against a lot of...